Please let's take our seats. Okay, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We will have our invocation by the Reverend Doctor, Reverend Doctor Coach Jay Livingston of Remnant Fellowship in Marlboro, Georgia, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and is Mr. Mitchell here. We will have Mr. Mitchell to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Every head bowed, every eye closed, every heart opened. Most gracious and honorable God, the one who sits high and looks low. A few of your servants have gathered together between these four hollowed hall walls in search of remedies, strategies, hopes and prayers. We know that you are God and God of all things. So the problems and the challenges that we have, we ask that you step in now. Give us the words to say, the strategies to do and the love to forgive. Bless those who have lost loved ones and those who are sick and those who would like to be here but cannot be. But because you are God, we ask that you continue to be gracious to us as we will continue to be gracious to you. Bless this meeting, bless all those that are here in Christ Jesus' name and for our sake. And the people said, "Amen."
Do you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our October 4th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments?
And before I ask for the, any items on the agenda, I just need to point out that Commissioner Franklin is joining us video conference this evening. Please now, is there, are there any other requests about the agenda?
Uh, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, number 20, which is 2023 benefits.
What are you wanting to?
What number was that?
Twenty-three?
Number 20.
Resolution, I'm sorry, Commissioner. Twenty twenty-two dash two one seven. Talking about, uh, senior services department apply, is that the right one?
No, no, no. Uh, benefits mixed retiree only.
Which one is that?
That's number 20.
Oh, 20, okay. What do you want to do with it?
I'm not sure. Uh, discuss it or if we discuss it in one of our sessions or something. I, I have serious questions regarding Anthem, Medicare.
Okay, so.
And a suggestion, may, can we just pull it? Yeah, let me, I, I, yeah, I would like to pull this for further discussion.
And this is for the retirees?
Yes.
That's the one you're concerned with?
That's the one, yes.
All right, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
All right. All right, she's making a motion to pull it all together. Is there a second to that motion?
I second it, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Can you speak?
Yes, Commissioner, we hear you.
Uh, just to make sure that there isn't a specific timeframe because we don't want to, um, have any disconnect in the continuity of services. But I do agree that there is additional information that does need to be gathered.
Ms. Amplis?
Will our retirees, the services?
The question is, is this time sensitive?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And Commissioner Franklin being in the industry, I'm thankful that she recognizes that. It is extremely time sensitive. I anticipated it being pulled because we have additional information that I need to share with the board, uh, as well as item nineteen. Uh, I was anticipating that too because we were down to the wire with negotiations. So I do need to share nineteen and twenty, but it is highly time sensitive.
Okay, what kind of timeline is it? Because I was gonna suggest with, uh, number twenty for the retiree, if we have time to poll our retirees to find out what's good because we had almost a disaster some years ago regarding taking away something from them. So I think we need to poll them because my thought is, especially on Anthem, I have serious questions regarding them because we've had so much in the news and the media.
Yes, ma'am.
Where they have been back and forth with hospitals not paying and, uh, patients were stuck in hospitals or bills were not paid. So I have serious questions.
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner, and I knew you would. And the, uh, because the board is such good stewards of everything that you all do. So I knew that you would. If you would allow me to present the presentation, I think that will answer your questions. And I have talked with the retirees and their concerns will be highlighted in the presentation. Additionally, there is a second option. So it's not, we, we do have an option one and an option two for the board to consider. But if you would allow me to do the presentation, I think your questions would be answered. But yes, ma'am, at this point in the juncture, uh, it would create serious problems, uh, a gap in the, in the coverage. But we, we got it covered for you. There are two different options and I'll be able to answer whatever questions that you have. Uh, our consultant, Mr. Jack, is here as well, Jack Thompson. And I think there may be some, um, representation from Anthem here. I, that, that doesn't even matter because we're gonna present the facts to the board.
What's, what's our timeline?
Our contracts in, our new plan year began, and this is making it easier for me so I don't have to do it when I get up here. So thank you, Commissioner. Our, uh, contracts in December 31st. Our new plan year begins January 1. With benefits, as anyone in the business knows, that there is a, there's a push because on the back end, once the board approves whatever, um, is gonna be for 23, there is a push on the back end. We've got these, we've got to change the system to make sure that the system is able to, uh, take the right deductions. That impacts payroll, us getting the right deductions to them, the deductions coming out of the, um, employees as well as the retirees' checks. So you got that particular issue that you're dealing with. You also, we have to make sure that contracts are in place so that I can make sure that I do what I need to do for Director Rogers shop because no contracts have to be in place. Uh, so there are a lot of different things that you're, we're dealing with on the back end. I think one of the most significant things is the carriers are not going to quote us until they can get every scrap of data. And that make, that makes sense, especially on the stop laws, on the stop law side. And I'll be able to go over that a little bit more. But they are looking for every bit of data they can before they will even quote us a price. And as we speak, claims data is being generated. We may have one of our employees at the hospital. We may have one who went to the doctor today. Somebody could be in urgent care. Claims data are constantly being generated. And there is always a lag between when it's generated and when we actually get that data. That's the type of data that the, that the underwriters, that the insurance companies are looking for. So on one hand, we have all of these administrative, uh, things that we have to get done to ensure a smooth transition from one year to the next. And by the same token, we have working with the carriers on this side of the house, trying to wait for them to give us a good quote. We don't wanna just take any, any quote. We want to, negotiations lasted up until the, uh, 11th hour. Uh, so there is a lot of different factors, uh, when it comes to, um, to administering a benefits program. So I did know that you were gonna have questions and we, we got, we'll be able to provide that to you during the presentation. It's, and the presentation is short and sweet, but there is more than one option.
Ms. Amplis?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, thank you. Um, I'll wait, I don't wanna speak without getting permission.
Commissioner Franklin.
All right. Thank you for sharing that. But, um, what I say is I do agree with Comit, Vice Chair. But I will say this to the board. The bottom line is we are up against the timeline at this point. For those that are wondering why I'm not here, there, because I'm actually, um, in Glendale County doing their benefits, uh, myself as they have a January 1 start date. But let me say this, though. We have, um, the staff should have presented this to us sooner. And so one of the things I have a concern with is, uh, when things are presented, it's always at the last minute. And it's almost as if we gotta make a decision or else people won't have coverage. So I do have concerns about continuity of coverage, particularly among all employees, but our retirees. Uh, with that being stated, though, I've, it's been no secret since I've been on this board for six years, I've been in this industry 18 years. The way that we do things in Clayton, um, it really could be a little bit better so that our, as even Madam Vice Chair said, that we could make sure that we service our people well. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Ye- yes, ma'am, and I, I agree with all you said, but I'm, I'm, go ahead. I'm sorry if you hadn't finished, Commissioner.
Ms. Amplis. So, real quick, um, just so the board is aware, all of the work that has to be done is true. But you can get good quotes without having to choose a company first. They, that, these companies can post based upon, um, the data that is pulled. And I do, we do this all the time where we compare one company to another. And I remember years ago begging this board not to make a certain decision based upon what was presented to us from HR. We did, and it was a disaster. But we have got to stop doing things at the last minute. And we've got to make sure that, uh, that our folks are gonna be served. So as opposed to pulling it, Madam Vice Chair, my suggestion would be, uh, if there's any way at all that we could, uh, hear, maybe hear the presentation, but also, HR needs to come back us what the current carrier is presenting to us. Because I understand the concern with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And when we did it last time, it was a disaster. So we need to know what the current carrier is willing to propose to us as well. So there is additional information needed. But again, we're up against the wall with this timeline and it's just not acceptable.
Um, I wanna, I wanna speak on behalf of that because I was prepared for that. Um, I, first of all, I would really like to know some information on what disaster is being referred to because not only am I going to show, um, additional information as far as the carriers. We did a survey, a 2023 benefit survey, and we do have 80% of our employees who are satisfied, uh, with their benefits because I believe in taking it to the street. Let me get information, uh, that is critical so that I won't be making decisions based on exaggerations and so forth. Additionally, we brought, we did, I believe it was in August, we did, no, it wasn't in August, excuse me. It was around July where we brought a presentation to the Board of Commissioners about the state of the benefits. At that time, I did not get any negative feedback from the board about anything that we were doing. That was the objective, purpose of that was to bring that presentation to the board so that we can find out the board's vision and direction so that we can make sure that we were aligned with what the board wants. So absent of feedback, uh, we proceeded on as we always have. So we are surveying, we are making sure that we try to keep the board informed. The state of the benefits was the first time that we done that and we plan on doing that every year because that gives the board the opportunity at that time to let us know what type of feedback that you all have so that we can make sure that we are aligned with the board's, uh, vision.
Well, maybe I missed that meeting because I don't recall Anthem, Anthem being mentioned because I would've said the same thing then.
Anthem, Anthem was not mentioned at that time, Commissioner, no, ma'am. It was a mission, mentioned at that time. But as I said, in anticipation of concerns about the switch, there is another option. And I'm, I will have our consultant, who has years of experience in the business, not only in one type of insurance but across the board. And he will come up and speak to the fact about the quotes and how we went about doing that. As good stewards of the, of the, of the, as of the citizen resources, we wanna make sure that we're getting the very best that we can. And that requires the spirit of negotiation, which is what we engaged.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is to, uh, remove. Would you like to rescind your motion and make a new motion to put it on the regular or just take it off?
No, I want the motion to go forward, but I would like to hear whatever the presentation is. If the people are here, but I still want the motion.
Well, there, there's not, go ahead, Commissioner Franklin.
Uh, Madam Vice Chair, I agree with you, but this is a challenge that I have. With your current recommendation, the turnaround time is too quick. People are gonna lose coverage. Unless extension for 30 days, and you know I'm not one about making decisions with the backup against the wall. But it's very problematic. But unfortunately, we have to note, as you just stated, the benefits, the state of benefits did not give us options. It did not give us, in fact, that was, Lord forgive me, that was one of the longest presentations I've ever seen in benefits. And again, 18 years. But it really did not give us the information that we needed as a board to help make a decision. And now we're in October. So, um, and I really don't know what the best suggestion is, but I do know that staff could have definitely adhered to a timeline that would have been more conducive so that we're not putting our retirees in this situation. So I do agree with you, but this is a, this is, we're in a tough situation at this point. Um, only other option we have, board, at this point is the broker could come up and see if he can get a 30-day extension, but then that's gonna change your start date as well. So if you wanna keep the, where January is the start date, then we got to get this enrollment with our, um, retirees completed and in the system, if not prior to Thanksgiving, at least by Thanksgiving. And only the broker can tell us how quick the turnaround it is. Uh, and there are other questions we have. I mean, that, that presentation on the benefits, we need to know how many people still even on our retiree program. We need to look at the usage of it so that we can have those options to make said decision as opposed to just given that this is what we're gonna have to do and we wanna present it tonight. So it, it's a tough call.
How would you like to proceed?
I, I just wanna make sure that we have polled our retirees and they are familiar or agree with this. Because before, I think it was almost a 100% no with what we were presenting. So I would like to see the retirees poll, if they can be polled in the next couple of days, uh, before the week is out. I'm not comfortable with this going forward, but I'm just one.
Chairman, is it possible to pull this from the agenda for that? The purpose that Commissioner Hambrik is stating. But make it as a work session for the 11th, next Tuesday. To begin to hopefully pull it back on the 18th to get answers, to get our questions answered.
I'm willing to do that.
Where's Ms. Amplis? I guess we'd have to ask Ms. Amplis, is it feasible for her to get that information?
If we voted up or down by the, what was it, 18th? That give you, was that, allow you enough time to still get the coverage that would be needed?
We would have to go back and, and, uh, review the timeline and stuff, but that's perfectly fine with me. However, the board wants to proceed, I'm here to, to try to do my job to the best of my ability. So that's perfectly fine.
Ms. Amplis, I just wanna make sure we, uh, don't lose coverage. So just a timeline that will, uh, keep us, uh, keep the retirees from losing coverage.
Board members, may I suggest?
Hold on a second, Commissioner Franklin. There's a question that Commissioner Hambrik has. Go ahead and answer it.
Due to the fact that we have got to get, um, and I don't have the timeline with me that we had, uh, that we had developed. We got a timeline because like I said, we've got to get the system changes. You can't change a system overnight, it has to be tested. Uh, but we, we will, we will make it work, Commissioner. But as I said earlier, Anthem is not the only option. We were making the, uh, recommendation as well for Aetna. Because one thing that I can say about Aetna that I was gonna say in my presentation is that they really did make a good-hearted effort to keep our business. They did, there is about $68,000 on the table if we were to go to Anthem. There is also a savings on the table if we were to go to Aetna in anticipation that there would be concern, uh, from the board. That is why I wanted to do the two options because they did make a good display as the fact that they value and want to keep our business. The presentation that you saw at the state of the benefits, which I wanna do on an annual basis, it wasn't about trying to make any choices at that time. It was just to inform the board as to where we were, how the benefits was running, how the benefits was functioning, uh, and so forth. That was a long meeting, but I don't recall the, the meeting being, the presentation being long because we were at the end, uh, because we weren't ready to proceed when we were first called.
So will a two-week delay affect us? Or I should say, impact us greatly?
Mr. Chair, I was waiting, Miss Speaker, I apologize.
I'm not gonna stand here and tell the board something that I may not be able to deliver on. We would make it, we, we would make it work. Uh, we, we would make it work, but I, I'm hesitant to say a two-week delay. Uh, especially if I got to bring it back to the board, see if it would be approved at that time. That's why it's critical to me to try to get as much feedback as I can so that I can be sure that I'm going in the right direction that you all want me to go in. But whatever the board deems necessary, we'll just have to make it happen.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, the reason I was trying to, um, interject, uh, members of the board, that's a, no disrespect, um, to, um, Ms. Amplis. That's what your broker has to answer that question. It's not our HR director that's going back to the carriers. If the broker is in the audience and if the board, uh, such as, uh, Madam Vice Chair and then I heard the interjecting, the question about how long will it, it take? Then, um, that has to come from your broker because they're the ones that are gonna have to have that quick turnaround. They're the ones that are gonna know that we gotta get it up and running. Now, remember, if you're going along with your same carrier, if that's what we wanted to do, then it's not going to be as long because they've already got that data feed and it's already in the system. What's gonna take a while is if we choose a different carrier and it's not going to be, even though I'm looking at, she said 68,000. But I do agree again with the board and their concerns for 68,000, particularly at this time. Um, I would rather for us to be sure that we know what we're doing. And my biggest note is it has to go on record that we should not be making this decision on the 4th of October when other carriers, um, like, again, we're in the middle of the final quarter open enrollment. This decision is one for a group our size. It should've been made before now. So staff really, and really should've been on top of this before this timeline. But with that being stated and hearing everything, um, if the broker is able to make it happen, I think we need to call for the question and y'all got some work to do. And, um, we need to have our work session.
Ms. CEO, you have some?
Yes, Chairman, so, um, as a potential, another recommendation. Uh, we talked about bringing before a presentation to the board on next Tuesday, the 11th. We can also advertise and ensure that we can make a decision next Tuesday as well so that will give us additional week if that's the pleasure of the board. So we provide you the preliminary information that you need prior to next week. You actually hear the presentation on the 11th and we also advertise so you can make a decision on the 11th so we don't have to wait till the 18th to give us more time if that's amenable to the board.
That sounds, yeah.
That will work.
That sounds fine.
Does Commissioner Hambrik have to amend her motion?
No, 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 no. Her motion is to remove it.
Remove it.
Put it on work session. All right. Everybody else good?
That's, I'm, we can complete the most.
No. We'll hear from them next week. Uh, is it next week? Yeah. All right. Those in favor of removing it, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Are there any others?
Uh, yes, Chairman.
Still on the adopt, uh, amendment of the budget?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have another.
Commissioner Hambrik?
Uh, yes, number 24. Uh, resolution 2022-218 regarding the Board of Ethics. I need, uh, I, I would like to take that one off also until we can discuss it and find out what's going on, what it, what that's all about.
All right, is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
Any questions? Well, my question is why would, what's going on with it is, um, they have not complied with our ordinance to submit their, uh, disclosure forms. And according to our ordinance, every member of every board must submit a disclosure form. Uh, they have, the ones that are on the list have been sent numerous emails, certified letters, and what else is on that list there? And, uh, attempted phone calls to no avail. So you would like to remove it for?
Because, uh, these people, uh, have been on these boards 20, 2020, 21, 2019. We have not had that training that we were talking about for our board members so they will know the different steps they need to take, what's required of them as serving on the board, being one of those that's filling out that, uh, ethics form. Also, how many meetings they can or cannot miss and other things. So, I mean, had they been on the board longer, but I would like to give them a chance to rectify this, uh, situation.
Well, and there are some good people on that board, but also by the same token, they've submitted these forms for the last several years as you alluded. Uh, they have been on the board for a long time and they have done that ever since we created that ordinance.
These people here?
Yes.
This is night, they were appointed 2021, 2021, 2020, and only two with 2019. So these are recent appointees.
Meeting date of appointment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the ones who have why by their names, they've already turned in their, um, and turned in that particular form. Look to your right where it says respond.
Right.
So those people should, we should have.
But they turned their form in like yesterday. So that, that was my objection to it. Like I said, there's some good folks, so it's, it's however the board wants to proceed.
I, I would like for us to be able to reach out to them because, um, because I don't, we don't know what situations. I know sometimes, you know, we get addresses and things happen. Um, I'd like to reach out to them. Um, I've already started reaching out to some of them and, um, working with the board, the mental health board, um, person over there to speak with, the secretary to speak with the, um, the people that are appointed to that board just to make sure that they get their letters in. So, you know, if we can work with them for now until, and, and then move from there.
Yeah, and if it's not done by the next meeting.
If it's not done by the next.
The only thing I'm gonna say is let's make sure that we are going to be consistent with how we treat board members if they fail to, uh, comply with the ordinances that we set for them.
That's fine, but let's also give them that training and give them a chance as well.
We were not being consistent because a couple of years ago, we removed, uh, one person and we didn't go through this about, uh, changing and putting on this on, with the ethics board or whatever.
I don't think the ethics board was in place at that time. But at any rate.
Yes, it was.
Was there a second?
It was in place.
Did we get a second on it?
I got a second.
Yes, I got a second.
All right, any other questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, and the only thing I would state, uh, is we need to check these addresses as well because I know in District 3, it's imperative that we have people that are representing, um, the district on the various boards. And I believe there are some that may be on boards who are no longer residing with at the areas of which they were appointed. And, um, but I'm ready to vote on this, but we really gotta go back and take a look at, uh, all of our boards. And they need training.
Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Uh, so it's five, four, one, I'm sorry. All right, any others?
Yes, um, I'd like to remove item number 15 from the, uh, completely from the agenda to study it, uh, the Sheriff Department compensation realignment. To study this, um, for all of our, excuse me, for all of our correctionals because my thought is how is this going to impact us further? Because I think there would be a, a realignment with other departments as well.
All right, I'll second the motion. Any questions?
Yes, so what are we doing?
Removing it.
Removing it.
For further, for further review of a study for all of.
For further review of a study for all of our correctionals.
No, I.
Hold on a second. Commissioner Franklin. Commissioner Franklin.
Yeah, I sent an email to the board and reached out to ACCG because I don't think we realize that what our role is with constitutional officers, number one. Number two, I think that we need to also understand that that is not a department. The tax assessor, tax commissioner, I apologize, is not a department. The clerk's office is not a department. The sheriff's office is not a department. And neither is the probate court. The only thing we're here to do is make sure that, again, their budgets are approved. So when you talk about parity or issues with other divisions, you've already had that. When we brought it before the board, you're paying police officers and firefighters for college education and we're not paying our deputies that. So I think that we've got to really begin to understand our roles as a board when it comes to our constitutional officers. And it will allow us to be able to operate in a more equitable fashion and then with the level of understanding of what we can, cannot, and should, and should not do in this space. So I don't agree with removing it. No, I don't agree with it, but the vote is the vote.
Right, so let me say this, aye. And Commissioner Franklin, you say this all the time, that we need to really understand what we're voting for. So in this resolution, it's not saying whether or not to give them the money or not, but when you have a clear delineation between a jailer and a correctional officer where one is required to have certain certifications and the other is not, but I believe we're asking to have the pay the same. So I just need to really understand, from my own personal identification, understand how one is required to have certain qualifications and the other one is not, but we're gonna give them the same pay. Why not just make them all correctional officers? But again, but again, that is for my benefit to really understand how this works. Commissioner Franklin. Hold on, hold on a second.
Can we have Major Chris to come up and explain that? Thank you.
Good evening, Board. As it relates to the compensation change, it's a parity issue. Yes, we are, our jailers, our correctional officers are certified. They do have to go through a training course to become a correctional officer to deal with inmates. They have to do so within six months. It is slightly, it is slightly different from the, looking at the correctional officers from that work in the prison.
Okay.
They're dealing with detainees that have been sentenced.
Okay.
And furthermore, you're looking at a facility, I want to say the corrections house about two hundred inmates. Where you look at the sheriff's office in the jail, they house two thousand inmates. So a parity issue is huge as it relates between, between the two. And just bumping them up to that is, is still not enough because like I said, the duties and the jobs of our correctional officers inside of the jail, I would probably say is ten times harder than what goes on in the prison.
And to my, I hear you loud and clear, Major Chris. And it's not about being, which one is more difficult or not. To me, and the reason I asked for this study, is not whether they deserve it or not, or not deserve it. I believe our correctional officers, as well as our PD and our staff, do deserve more. It's a matter of how does it impact us in the near future from our fiduciary responsibility. And we have Ward Nelson in the back, if he can speak to that as well. Because my thought is, this impacts us from about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar impact to the budget. My question is, if there are many or multiple different types of correctional officers, how do we begin to gauge from a salary standpoint, how to respond to them?
Let me also say this. I just, I recently did a study as it relates to the sheriff's departments, I'm sorry, the sheriff's offices throughout the state of Georgia. Our Clayton County correctional officers are the lowest paid in the metro area.
And can I ask a question? When is the last time, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, when's the last time you all have had a raise as far as, before we started giving you all the raises and things of that nature?
I know the board approved a raise for public safety here recently.
Yeah, but I'm talking about before that.
But before that, it's, it's been a long time. I mean, our, our part-time deputy positions that are certified to carry weapons inside the state of Georgia, you could go to Walmart and make more money. But back to the subject of this heater.
I just wanted to.
This here, just because of the simple fact, it's, it's not fair for the sheriff's office to have correctional officers leaving us to go work at another place within the, within this county and make a thousand dollars more with less responsibility. And that's the problem that we're currently facing.
And like I said, that's, to me, that's not, that's not the, the reason that I want to do the study. I just wanna make sure that, and Ward Nelson, could you come forward, please? Because I want to, want to make sure, it's not about deserving the money or not. That's, that's, that is not the emphasis of my, of my question and wanting to do a study. It's to make sure that we have some sense of known parity throughout the systems and the dynamics of what we're doing here.
Good evening, Commissioners. Did you want me to explain the differences?
Yeah, there's you as well.
Well, excuse me, let me just.
Go ahead.
Yeah, okay, and while you're explaining the difference, I would like to know if the pay scale is the same for all correctional officers, whether it be the prison, the sheriff's office, and is it youth?
Detention center.
Youth detention have correctional officers too, I believe.
Yeah, but that's the thing.
Well, okay, well, who, whatever other departments have correctional officers, are all correctional officers paid the same?
No, ma'am. Within the state system, the state prison system, they are paid the same. However, with the corrections facilities that are private and also county, they vary as far as what they normally pay.
And why do they vary?
They vary because they're not one organization. They're individual counties. Like our county has certain pay for corrections officers. Gwinnett County pays theirs differently. Clark County. There's twenty-one county prison facilities in the state and they set their own pay. You go down into South Georgia, it's a lot less. You get up here in the metro area, it's a lot more.
So tell us about the duties and responsibilities because what he's asking for is this parity in pay for corrections officer to be competitive in the metro area. So why, why, what's the, what's the difference?
Yes, sir. And we're experiencing about a thirty percent reduction in staff right now. You know, this is a, it's a wide-open market in, in public safety. The jailers that work in a sheriff's office go through an eighty-hour course. They go through jailer, basic jailer training. It's a registration. It's not considered one of the post-certifications as peace officer, corrections officer, probation officer. The major difference is, is we go to two-hundred-and-forty hours training. We have arrest powers and we are certified to carry firearms. And it's, it is a different, it is a different job duty. We're not dealing with booking in people. We're dealing with state convicted felony inmates. And of course, when we have our officers out on, on the street, they're supervising inmates. They have to be armed because some of these folks are dangerous. And I'm not gonna say the jail doesn't have dangerous people either. But the, that's the basic, the basic difference is, there is a jailer position and then there's a corrections officer position. And corrections officers included under the Peace Officer Standards and Training Act as, under the peace officer designation. I don't have the section number in front of me, but it is considered a peace officer.
Any questions?
No, thank you. I think that's, that right there, what they're both saying. Like I say, this is not about whether either deserves more money. That's not what this is about. This is about saying, look, if we are going to begin to look at this from a salary increase, we need to look at it as a whole, even though they're two separate entities. We need to look at it as a whole in doing our study because the impact on the county fund, on the county source, is going to increase with this. It's going to increase if this is approved, I say in the near future. But, and so what is the impact on our budget if this is approved?
Let me just say this lastly. The sheriff's office has not had parity pay since, and, I mean, I've only been with sheriff's office about a year and a half and there's not parity pay anywhere within the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office, you can go over to the police department and you can make more money walking inside of the door. They pay for education and that's not something that we have within the sheriff's office. And if you look at, and that's deputies, and we have the same jobs. And then if you look furthermore as, as, at the correction officer stage, it is a certification. It is a certification that our correctional officers must have to, to even handle inmate. And if they don't receive that certification in six months, they can no longer be a correctional officer. So carrying weapons, they don't carry weapons inside, inside of their, inside of the prison. And the type of inmates we, they carry and the type of inmates we hold, they're looking at more so non-violent felons inside the prison. Whereas within our, within our, in our facility, we have murderers. We have serial rapists. So it's, 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 I mean, even if you try to compare the two, there's no apples. I mean, you can't compare.
Well, the danger exists in both, in both. Everybody, and you're both are detaining or not detaining, but taking care of inmates.
Yes.
Yeah, hold on a second, Commissioner Franklin. They, they are taking care of inmates, correct?
Different levels of inmates. That's the reason why.
Different levels, different levels.
But that's the reason why some inmates go to max-security prisons. We have, we house them all. And, and tell me if I'm wrong, Ward, and I'm not taking anything away from you, but tell me, are you guys housing max-security inmates within your facility? Or are they more so less, less violent offenders?
The, the level of violence often changes in a second. We have medium and minimum security. Our medium security, we're required to have an armed corrections officer when we have them out working any of the details. We have armed robbers in there. We have those that have kidnapped. We, we have, we have, we do not have murderers inside. They, they're considered close security and they remain in the state prison system. However, we do have dangerous offenders. And also each year, we have, we're required to go through deadly force, youth deadly force training, firearms requalification, and the community development, or community policing training that is required by the state of Georgia that the governor's initiative.
And this isn't a contest to see who has the baddest inmates. It's just trying to figure out what is fair. All right. And I appreciate you, Major Chris, for giving me a little more clarification as to what you're asking for. Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, if I may, Board, your questions are met. But I think that we need to all be brought back to the level of understanding, as I began, that we're not talking about a department. I've sent an email to you all that we do a lot of things out of practice, but not out of law. I have to let you know again that I have spoken to the state because I believe that this is a space that we really just, I don't know if we're not quite understanding our particular roles when it comes to constitutional officers. If want to even entertain the debate of parity, you have to begin with the fact that we're already at a disadvantage. I brought it before the board. I know that Dr. Anderson has brought it before the board that for many years, we have paid, again, the police officers and firefighters for the educational incentives, but we didn't do the same for that. That's number one. Number two, though, it is not our job to dictate to any constitutional officer of how they should be using their money. It is not our job. So when you're talking about what's happening at the jail where we are there under the contract and providing service, yes, we need to take care of our folks in our jail. Yes, we need to make sure that they're paid a wage that is acceptable like we did last time, making sure everybody got that right. But the point I'm trying to get this board to understand is that it's not our place when it comes to constitutional officers to haggle back and forth about how a constitutional officer is using their money. Now, if we did have that ability, then it would be right in what we, what we've done recently that even our interim CFO had to come to a better understanding of, that once money is utilized or put into an account, it is for that said purpose because the board has voted. So when we're talking about the impact on our budget to Commissioner Davis' point, well, let's begin with the fact that the two million dollars was moved out of their budget when we voted on it. Let's begin with the fact that with our previous CFO, that funding that is provided to us by the state for every, every inmate was not put in the account that it should have been in, but instead it was put in the general fund. Or the mere fact that we've got and we've seen people popping out of jails and we know that that jail is our responsibility as a board of commissioners, but we still wait to get that particular item fixed. So I think, again, this board would greatly benefit from having those with the state come and tell us what our constitutional obligations are as a board and then help us to understand better the relationship with our constitutional officers. Because a lot of questioning that you all have now is you're talking to a office as if they're one of departments that are under our direct authority. And that's not the case.
I have a question. Can I find out what, what is the motion?
To take it off.
I call for the question.
It's to take it off.
The motion was to remove fifteen from the agenda.
But not?
To do a study.
Thirty, okay.
To do a study, which is what we're doing publicly in a sense, in order to address this.
But let, let me say this also, our place.
Thank you, Major Chris, for bringing us to the attention. It needs to be had.
There's a discussion about our place as a board and constitutional officers, but it is our place to ask the questions, to get a clearer understanding as to what we're voting for. If we were to act as a rubber stamp committee, then it shouldn't even have to come before us. If we're just supposed to give the constitutional officers a blank check and say, here you go. But we have to be good stewards of the citizens' money and we, and we do that by asking questions. So not only we can gain a better understanding, but the citizens as well because they're the ones who are basically footing the bill. So at this time, I will, the motion.
Again, to remove item fifteen from the agenda to do a further study on this immediately.
All right, now I'll second the motion. Are there any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Nay.
Three to it passes. And we're not saying that, and we're not saying that we won't do it. We just need to get a better understanding of it. That, that's basically it. And let's try to, are you in a position to, both of you, to come to a work session and discuss this?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good. Major?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. Any others? Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, thank you. You talked about rubber stamping. That's not the point. I just want you all to understand that I will be adding to the agenda so we have a better understanding. It's not about rubber stamping, but thank you.
Any others? Commissioner Hammer, I thought you had. You good? We're still on the, amending the agenda.
Yes, we are.
I don't have nothing else. I'm good. Y'all ready to move on?
All right. With that being said, I will take a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, there's something else. Yes, Mr. Reed?
Commissioner Hammer, you removed twenty, but it looks like nineteen is also part of that. Did you also intend to include that or is that gonna be part of the consent agenda?
Benefits next, number nineteen. Or did you just want to retire?
No, 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 just the retire.
Just the retire.
Just the retiree section.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain the motion to adopt the agenda.
Some moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions?
Yes, now we did take off twenty-four, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I have fifteen, twenty, and twenty-four.
Okay.
Can I ask, I do have one question. More or less for Commissioner Hammer. Would you take it off twenty? Number nineteen does say with the benefit mix, it is on behalf of the employees. number 19 does say with the benefit mix, it is on behalf of the employees and retirees. I just want to.
But it's different benefits.
But it's different benefits, though.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Our next item is Veteran of the Month.
All right, get to the good stuff now. All right. Veteran of the Month is definitely no stranger to us or this community. Mr. Mitch Johnson is a 27-year resident of Clayton County. He has always believed in Clayton County and has been engaged throughout the community to make Clayton County a great place to work, live, and have fun. Before settling down in Clayton County, Mitch served 25 years as an officer and aviator in the U.S. Army. In the military, he developed his organizational leadership skills, which have led to his passion for assisting people and serving the community. He has implemented successful programs that bring together community businesses, academia, and students. A regional vice president, Mitch has his own financial services business. He provides a valuable service in the form of complimentary financial strategies that address today's financial issues. His goal is to educate hardworking mainstream families, just like our employees and students, on simple concepts that change their financial future forever. Involved in the community, Mitch is the sponsor of the Pitch Perfect, a competition held annually among the 11 Clayton County high schools. The development of soft skills is important as well as valuable. He is also the sponsor of the Georgia Action Children's Business Fair, bringing children ages 6 to 14 together to exhibit their business and entrepreneurial skills. He currently serves as Executive Director of the Foundation Board of the Clayton County Public Schools and is a member of the Work-Based Learning Advisory Committee with the Clayton County Public Schools and the Promotions Committee with the City of Jonesboro. Mitch is originally from Boston, Massachusetts. I did not know that Mitch. He received a bachelor of science degree in mathematics from Howard University in Washington, D.C. Helped me recognize and honor this year, this month, Veteran of the Month, Mr. Mitch Johnson.
Our next item is the proclamation, Digital Inclusion Week 2022. Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognize Digital Inclusion Week. Whereas the Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognize broadband services are essential infrastructure for the 21st century and play an important role in providing access to knowledge and opportunities for communities locally and around the world. And whereas digital equity ensures all individuals and communities have the information technology capacity needed for full participation in our society, democracy, and economy, and is necessary for civic and cultural participation, lifelong learning, and access to essential services. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has highlighted the need for broadband infrastructure and digital equity across the county, as some 20% of Clayton County households lack wireline internet service. To help meet this need, Clayton County is committed to providing digital inclusion to ensure that all individuals and communities, including the most disadvantaged, have access to and the use of information and communication technologies. And whereas the Department of Information Technology's Office of Digital Equity and Inclusion was established in July 2022, which will help Clayton County become a leader in broadband access by expanding its investments in digital technology while working to expand public access to Clayton County residents. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 3 through 7, 2022, as Digital Inclusion Week in Clayton County, and ask the citizens of Clayton County to join us in raising awareness of digital equity and broadband access issues and doing all we can to close the digital divide. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed the fourth day of October in the year 2022. Mr. Chairman, our next item is the approval of the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any other items? Here are none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Next items are board appointments, starting with item number 29.
All right, first board appointment is to the Tax Assessor's Office. Mr. Benjamin Pascal's term on the Tax Assessor's Board will expire October 25, 2022. New term begins October 25, 2022, and will expire October 25, 2025. At large appointment, are there any recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I would like to make a recommendation.
Hold on, Commissioner Franklin, Commissioner Hammer had spoke up. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, I would like to reappoint Mr. Benjamin Pascal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Four, one, it passes. Commissioner Franklin, oppose. All right, next board appointment is Impact Fee Advisory Board. Clayton County Impact Fee Advisory Board was established with the approval of ordinance 2022-170. The committee shall serve in an advisory capacity to assist and advise the board of a development impact fee ordinance. The board chairman and each district commissioner will have two appointments in which the composition of members shall be comprised of no less than 50% of members who are representatives from the development, building, or real estate industries. Dr. Anderson, are you ready to proceed?
Yes, I make a motion to recant Ms. Sandra Griffin and appoint Dr. McCullough to the Impact Fee Advisory Board at this time.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. All right, next board appointment is Impact Fee Advisory Board. Commissioner Davis, you have two selections.
Yes, I'd like to appoint Mr. Ken Nguyen to that Impact Fee Advisory Board.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Your second?
The second one I'd like to hold until the next meeting.
Madam Clerk, hold until the next meeting.
Our next item is public comment. The board will now hear.
No, we had, we took those off though, right? Okay, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Citizens will be given two minutes maximum time limit to speak before the board, with a total time of 20 minutes for public comments. Please note that all comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name, county of residency for the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Pat Bryant. Pat Bryant.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County. Madam Clerk, September 6th, Resolution 2022-193, update commissioners' credit card limits, travel, and training expenses. Commissioner Franklin asked, what is the difference? Then said we can discuss it privately, but we do not rubber stamp requests, right? June 7th, Resolution 112, terminated CFO Mona Bivins' contract. June 21st, Resolution 132, hired David Corbin from Terminus to investigate CFO. But Terminus was investigated in February 2022. June, July 5th, PSA Number 22174 awards Terminus $87,000 contract for six months. July 21st, Terminus recommends an internal audit for the COO, CFO, and the county attorney claiming the COO didn't have the authority. August 2nd, the COO's response to Terminus' letter referred to Resolution 2019-66, an employment agreement with the full board approval. August 2nd, Resolution 167 authorized the internal audit. September 6th, Resolution 196 authorization to recoup CFO's tuition reimbursement payments. September 13th, Mac Underwood of Terminus said, you need a CFO. September 12th, the Ethics Board denied seven complaints saying it did not meet the requirements, but the ordinances are written by the Board of Commissioners. Commissioners write the code of conduct, gives the input on credit card limits and travel expenses, and writes the ordinance for the Ethics Board. Where's the accountability?
Thank you, sir. Reverend Dr. Coach Livingston. It was a mistake, right? Okay, no problem, thank you. And thank you for being here, it's good to see you again.
Board of Commissioners, I'm Stephen Fenter, President of Clayton House Incorporated, which has been a service to this county since 1984. And my thing is this, when y'all are issuing grants, you do not look at things such as what lives are being saved, what we're doing for the county. We have constantly asked for more than you give us. And not only that, the last time we applied for a grant, y'all asked for information that is impossible for AA to give out. You asked for names, addresses, phone numbers of people that came to our meetings. AA does not allow that. I don't know if y'all don't understand what anonymity means, but, you know, we can't do it. Now, we asked for a measly $25,000, and we've been getting 10. The, I know there are other agencies in this county that do not provide the same service we do and save lives like we do, that get more money than we do. And with that, I would just ask you to take that into consideration and let us know, one way or another. I'm sorry Felicia's not there. I miss her. And Mr. Turner, I still thank you for what you did years ago.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Felicia, if she can hear me.
Commissioner Franklin.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner, if you can hear me. I hate to use cliches, but what we have here is a failure to communicate. And we have people that are backstabbing, backbiting, putting friction within the workings of our community and our county government, and bringing in personality problems. You need to leave your personality at home and take care of county business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. Is there a need for executive session?
Yes, on all three, personnel, litigation, and real estate.
Is there a motion to go to executive session for personnel litigation? And, hold on, hold on, I gotta get the last one out. Personnel, litigation, and real estate.
In Massachusetts.
See me after me. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. All right, motion to reconvene. I'll second the motion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, unanimous. Uh, who's gonna go first, Ms.?
I'll go first. All right, do you want me to do the litigation altogether?
Yes, please.
Okay. First is a settlement agreement in the matter of Noemi Quiraz that occurred, related to an accident that occurred on May 21, 2021 at or near the intersection of Highway 138 and Terra Boulevard. And that's against Clayton County and Wadrikus Thomas, among others. And that is in the amount of $30,000. Next is in the matter of Deborah Ocampo versus Clayton County in regard to an accident that occurred on or around September 24, 2019 at or near the intersection of Church Street and King Road in Clayton County in the amount of $35,000. And next is Terrence McGuire against Clayton County in animal control and Sabrina Pyrenzino relating to an accident that occurred on July 8, 2021 at or near 3199 Anvil Road in Clayton County for an amount of $26,000. And those are the litigation.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Some moved.
Is there a second? Any questions on any other items? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
I have, I'll have, I'll do the real estate items separately. First is a matter of the sale of 2.43 acres of right-of-way at Mount Zion. It's at the southern corner of the intersection of Mount Zion Road and Richardson Parkway. It's, uh, at the southern corner of the intersection of Mount Zion Road and Richardson Parkway uh, in the amount of $45,000 to the Andrew Young Foundation. This is associated with the Aquaponics, um, facility.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
May I also include within that the ability for you to be able to sign any closing documents to execute anything related to the close of, sale of that property?
Okay.
Some move.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Uh, the next is, um, the offer to purchase 18.94 acres at Terra Boulevard and Old Poston Road in Jonesboro um, in the amount of $2.5 million. Um, and also authorizing you to execute any documents associated with that and also the chief financial officer to amend the budget as necessary.
All right, is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Ms. Ambles.
Board of Commissioners, I don't think I've had the opportunity to say good evening to you all and also good evening to our Clayton County citizens. I never want to miss an opportunity to salute them. Um, Human Resources, we have two items. I'll start with on behalf of the Office of the Chief Operating Officer. Uh, Human Resources is requesting a $5,000 increase in compensation for Marcia Davis. Ms. Davis is currently a step, um, a grade 19, step 15. Uh, of course, we will ma, well, let me say this. The total of her compensation with the $5,000 increase will be $54,041.69. And we will match this to the scale. She's currently at 1915, but the total will be matched to scale, which more than likely will, uh, increase that total by just a little bit. And we will apply the applicable fringe benefits as well.
Is there a motion? Some move? Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Is there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
The last one, on behalf of Juvenile Court, we are requesting to add a Juvenile Court Administrator, grade 36, step 1. Total compensation is a $124,536. We are requesting to delete, uh, Director of Juvenile Court, grade 35, step 19. Total compensation is $146,717. We're also requesting to delete Director of Program and Resource Development, grade 33, step 17. Total compensation is $130,484. The effective date will be 10/22/22. And HR will put on record that this particular date aligns with the requirements of Civil Service Rule 9.203 regarding notification requirements.
And that is a savings of...
Yes, ma'am, thank you, thank you, Vice, thank you, Vice Chair. That is a savings of $152,665.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
Thank you all.
Is that it? A motion to adjourn. I'll make the motions, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Have a good night.